Hi ladies, good morning. Let's bow down in prayer right now. Father God, we just want to thank you, Lord, for today, Father, and for being able to just worship you, Lord, and to be able to raise our hands, Lord, and just to be comforted by you regarding all these things that are going on in this world, Lord. We give it to you, Father, and we worship you, Lord, and we will continue to worship you no matter what happens, Lord. We thank you today, Lord, for our speaker, Father. We just pray, Father God, that you will bless or bless everyone here, Lord, that's here, just wanting to listen and yearn to just learn about you, Father. We thank you again in Jesus' name, amen.
Ladies, would you stand?
If we can stand, please. Hear your beautiful voices. My hope is built on nothing less than Jesus' blood and righteousness. I dare not trust the sweetest grain but holy trust in Jesus' name.
Sing that again.
My hope is built on nothing less than Jesus' blood and righteousness. I dare not trust the sweetest grain but holy trust in Jesus' name. Christ alone, cornerstone, weak made strong in the Savior's love. Through the storm, he is Lord, Lord of all. When darkness seems to hide his face, I rest on his unchanging grace. In every high and stormy gale, my anchor holds within the veil. My anchor holds within the veil. Christ alone, cornerstone, weak made strong in the Savior's love. Through the storm, he is Lord, Lord of all. Christ alone, cornerstone, weak made strong in the Savior's love. Through the storm, he is Lord, Lord of all. When he shall come with trumpet sound, oh may I then in him be found, dressed in his rachetousness above, faultless stand before the throne. Christ alone, cornerstone, weak made strong in the Savior's love. Through the storm, he is Lord, Lord of all. Christ alone, cornerstone, weak made strong in the Savior's love. Through the storm, he is Lord, Lord of all. He is Lord, Lord of all.
Amen.
When the music fades, all is stripped away and is simply calm. Longing just to be something that's worth, that will bless your heart. I'll bring you more than a song for a song in itself. It's not what you have required. You search much deeper within through the way things appear. You're looking into my heart. I'm coming back to the heart of worship and it's all about you. It's all about you, Jesus. I'm sorry, Lord, for the thing I've made it when it's all about you. It's all about you, Jesus. King of endless worth, no one could excess how much you deserve. The one we can pour, all I have is yours, every single breath. I'll bring you more than a song for a song in itself. It's not what you have required. You search much deeper within through the way things appear. You're looking into my heart. I'm coming back to the heart of worship and it's all about you. It's all about you, Jesus. I'm sorry, Lord, for the thing I've made it when it's all about you. It's all about you, Jesus. I'm coming back to the heart of worship and it's all about you. It's all about you, Jesus. I'm sorry, Lord, for the thing I've made it when it's all about you. It's all about you. It's all about you, Jesus. It's all about you. It's all about you. It's all about you, Jesus. It's all about you, Jesus.
Good morning, ladies. How's everybody doing this morning? It's wonderful to see you all here, and it's also wonderful to see you all online, although we can't see you. This morning, well, this week, we studied about five women that made some wrong choices. I know I've made wrong choices in my life, and I bet some of you have made some wrong choices too. But let's see what Karen Roberts has to say about these five women that made some very wrong choices. Take a listen.
Good morning, good morning. Psalm 16:7. "I will bless the Lord who has given me counsel; my heart also instructs me in the night seasons. I have set the Lord always before me; because he is at my right hand, I shall not be moved. Therefore my heart is glad and my glory rejoices; my flesh, who will rest in soul? For you will not leave my soul unchil'd, nor will you allow your holy one to see corruption. You will show me the path of life; in your presence is fullness of joy. At your right hand are pleasures forevermore." Let's pray. Oh, Father, you have taken us by the right hand and you're leading us. Lord, we just thank you. Thank you that you are always near us and you have pleasures in your right hand just for the plucking. Lord, we just thank you. Thank you. Be with the ladies online and here. Empty their minds of everything except you. Help them to focus. Focus on you only and learn from you. In Jesus' name, amen. Good morning, ladies. Good to see you here in the sanctuary and also to see you virtually online. I hope your week was great. It was an interesting week, wasn't it? I hope you're well and looking forward to discussing the women of the Bible that we have studied. How many of you have hummingbirds in your yard? I have two hummingbird feeders in my backyard. I also have a hummingbird swing. Have you ever seen a hummingbird swing? When we saw it at the nursery, I thought, "Well, that's kind of silly." But Keith had to buy it because one of his students invented it. So we hung it up in the tree, and you know what? Hummingbirds started swinging. They love to swing. So this year, we have a very aggressive hummingbird. He thinks our backyard is his kingdom. He's a nervous little bird. He goes from one plant to the next plant, to the next, to the treetop, and then to the swing. We named him Nelson, Nervous Nelson. It would have been Nervous Nelly, but he's a guy, so Nelson. Sometimes our backyard is a war zone. Word about the feeders and all the flowers that we have has gotten out, and some hummingbirds, they start sneaking in. And sometimes they're successful, most times they're not, because Eagle Eye Nelson zooms in and chases them off. Well, one day, a hummingbird fought back, and you know what? They were going at it and going so fast, and they were buzzing all around Keith and me, and they collided. They collided, and feathers, little tiny feathers, went all over the place, but neither one fell. And Nelson got on his swing, and he swung it frantically, and the other hummingbird left. Okay, so what's that have to do with the ladies that we're studying today? Nelson was focused on food, focused on the comfort of knowing that this was his kingdom. He was focused on the temporal, and he was focused on himself. Lot's wife, Potiphar's wife, Haman's wife, Job's wife, Ananias' wife, all were women who made bad choices. They were focused on themselves. Like Nelson, Lot's wife longed for luxury, status, lifestyle that she enjoyed in Sodom. Potiphar's wife, she longed for sexual pleasure with Joseph, and not getting it, she sought revenge. She was willing to do battle, like Nelson. And Haman's wife, Zaresh, she longed for revenge upon Mordecai. Not, he wasn't honoring her husband, Haman, again, like Nelson. Job's wife, oh my, she needed relief from her grief of losing everything, even her sons and daughters, and she needed relief for Job, who was in extreme pain. She had lost grip of her integrity before God. Nelson, I don't think he ever had any integrity. Ananias' wife, Safira, she longed to be admired as one who is generous. So they sold some property and lied about the proceeds, and they gave it to the church, but they didn't give all of it. But they pretended that it was all, and they were caught. Hmm, my. Focused on their reputation, focused on keeping some wealth. Nelson was focused on keeping his kingdom just for himself. All the women longing for something, focusing on the worldly things, focusing seeing on themselves and their comfort, their pleasure, and their reputations. What do you long for? I think we all long for this pandemic to be over and its consequences: job loss, sickness, quarantine, isolation, and even some troubled relationships, maybe even some troubled marriages. And of course, there's depression. Are we focused on ending the trouble, focused on getting back to the way things used to be? What is our focus? Our memory verse is Matthew 6:33. Let's say it together. "But seek first the kingdom of God and his righteousness, and all these things shall be added to you." Do you believe that? If you believe it, then we can focus forward. The title of this teaching is Focus Forward. Are we focusing on seeking the kingdom of God and his righteousness first? Jesus says in Matthew 13:45-46, "Again, the kingdom of heaven is like a merchant seeking beautiful pearls, who, when he had found one pearl of great price, went and sold all that he had and bought it." Selling all for Jesus, seeking his kingdom and his righteousness first. Forward, focus. Abram and Sarah left all to follow God's path. They took Lot with them. Lot and Abram grew very wealthy with many flocks, herds, and tents, so much so that eventually they needed to part. So Abram told Lot, "Okay, you choose which way you'll go, and I'll go the opposite way." Genesis 13:10 tells us that, "Lot lifted his eyes and saw all the plain of Jordan, that it was well watered everywhere, before the Lord destroyed Sodom and Gomorrah, like the garden of the Lord, like the garden of Eden, like the land of Egypt," as you go down towards Tzohair, also called Bilah in chapter 14. Tzohair was a little village southeast of the Dead Sea in Jordan. "It was lush and balsam and indigo, and date trees grew there." Lot and his family settled in Sodom, north of Tzohair, along the Dead Sea. He had done very well in Sodom and was a town elder. He sat at the gate of the city. David Guzik says that the gate of the city was like a town hall, where the important men of the city judged disputes, conferred with one another, and supervised those who entered and left the city. Sodom was evil, practicing sexual depravity and homosexuality, but it was more than that. Ezekiel 16:49-50 tells us the sin of Sodom was pride, fullness of food, abundance of idleness; neither did she strengthen the hand of the poor and needy, and they were haughty and committed abomination before God. This was the place where Lot, his wife, and daughters made their home. Because of the sin in Sodom and Gomorrah, God revealed to Abram that he was going to destroy the cities. Abram bargained with God, and God promised that if he found ten righteous people in Sodom, that he would not destroy it. He didn't find ten righteous people. So God sent two angels, appearing as men, to lead Lot and his family out of the city before it was destroyed. The men of the city wanted Lot to let them rape the two angels. Instead, he offered his two daughters. The crazed crowd almost broke Lot's door down trying to get to the angels, but the angels struck them with blindness. Turn to Genesis 19. Genesis 19, beginning with verse 15. Let me know when you're there. Genesis 19, verse 15. "When morning dawned, the angels urged Lot to hurry, saying, 'Arise, take your wife and your two daughters, who are here, lest you be consumed in the punishment of the city.' And while he lingered," Lot lingered even though he knew there was going to be judgment. "And while he lingered..." And while he lingered, the men took hold of his hand, his wife's hand, and the hands of his two daughters, the Lord being merciful to him. And they brought him out and set him outside the city. So it came to pass, when they had brought them outside, that he said, 'Escape for your life; do not look behind you nor stay anywhere in the plain. Escape to the mountains, lest you be destroyed.' Then Lot said to them, 'Please, no, my lords! Indeed, now your servant has found favor in your sight, and you have increased your mercy, which you have shown me by saving my life. I can't escape to the mountains, lest some evil overtake me and I die. See now, this city is near enough to flee to, and it is a little one. Please, let the escape there. Is it not a little one? Am I so shall live?' And he, the angel, said to Lot, 'See, I have favored you concerning this thing also, in that I will not overthrow this city for which you have spoken. Hurry, escape there; for I cannot do anything until you arrive there.' Therefore the name of the city was called Tzohair. The sun had risen upon the earth when Lot entered Tzohair. He entered Tzohair. Verse 24. "Then the Lord rained brimstone and fire on Sodom and Gomorrah from the Lord out of the heavens; so he overthrew those cities, all the plain, all the inhabitants of the cities, and what grew on the ground. But his wife, Lot's wife, looked back behind, behind Lot, and she became a pillar of salt." Lot... Lot's wife was behind Lot. She wasn't in Tzohair. And she looked behind. She was not focused forward. Some think that Lot's wife lagged behind and was caught in the destruction. The words "looked back" means looking intently, gazing, respecting. Perhaps she longed for the luxurious life that she had enjoyed in spite of the sin in Sodom. She wasn't looking forward to what lay before her. Remember, the Lord sent angels to bring them out, to bring them out of the sinful Sodom, and told them to go to the mountains. But they longed for the city, even if it was a little city. So the angels gave them permission to go to Tzohair. Not God's perfect will for them, but His permissive will. Pastor Chuck Smith said, "On the south end of the Dead Sea, Dr. Kyle discovered under Mount Uzdam a strata of salt a hundred and fifty feet thick. Just above it, there is a strata of marl. That's calcium carbonate. It's mingled with free sulfur. At the proper time, God kindled the gases, and there was a great explosion. The salt and sulfur were blown into the air so that it literally rained fire and brimstone." It could be that as Lot's wife looked back, even hanging back, reluctant to leave, she was covered by a pillar of salt. Spurgeon says about Lot's wife, "Doom befell her at the gates of Tzohair, to get up to the very gates of heaven, and to perish there will be a most awful thing." Close and so far away. Not focused forward. Moving towards God's saving grace, pausing to look back. Destruction and judgment. Matthew 6:19 to 21 says, "Do not lay up for yourselves treasures on earth, where moth and rust destroy and where thieves break in and steal; but lay up for yourselves treasures in heaven, which neither moth nor rust destroys, where thieves do not break in and steal; for where your treasure is, there your heart will also be." Lot's wife's treasure lay back in Sodom. To receive the treasure that cannot be taken or torn away, we must focus forward. We must obey God and follow His plan for our lives. Do you want God's perfect plan for your life? I do. Then we must focus forward, not looking back. Paul tells the Philippians in chapter 3, verse 13, "Brethren, I do not count myself to have apprehended, but one thing I do: forgetting those things which are behind and reaching forward to those things which are ahead, I press toward the goal for the prize of the upper call of God in Christ Jesus." Paul focused forward. Longing for the past and its lifestyle, its pleasantries, its relationships, its comfort. I think that's where we are today. We're longing for what used to be before the pandemic. Health, wealth, freedom to go anywhere, freedom to gather with each other closely. Luke 17:32 says, "Remember Lot's wife." Jesus spoke of His second return. He said that everyone will be eating and drinking as in the days of Noah and in the days of Lot, when He left Sodom. Don't long for the world. Turn from it and focus on obeying God. Spurgeon says of Lot's wife, "She did look back, and thus proved she had sufficient presumption in her heart to defy God's command and risk her all to give a lingering love glance at the condemned and guilty world. By that glance, she perished." A lingering love glance. Are we looking back at what we enjoyed before and not looking forward to what God has planned for us in the future? He has us by the right hand if we will allow Him to guide us. May our love glances be focused forward, seeking the kingdom of God and His righteousness. My takeaway from Lot's wife? Take God's hand. "Just as the angels took Lot's wife's hand and led her out of the city, we should let God take our hands and lead us out of our sins, out of those things that are negatively impacting our relationship with Him." Number two, start walking. Walk the path that God has set before us toward His perfect plan. Start walking in the pandemic and focus forward, not behind. Number three, focus forward. Just as Paul did not look back but focused forward to the upper call of God. Let's not be a nervous Nelson trying to hold on to the worldly past. Let's take God's hand, start walking, and focus forward. Let's pray. Oh, Father, You are the God who is near Your people. You are the God who wants to take Your daughters' hands and lead us. In this time, Lord, help us not to look back but to focus forward to what You have for us to do, for us to enjoy in our relationships with You. Father, You know all things. You have great plans for these daughters of Yours. Reveal them to them. Help them to step out, focusing forward, focusing upward on You and enjoying the pleasures that You have in Your right hand. Lord, go with the ladies as they discuss the lesson. Teach them what You would have them to learn. Lord, we love You and we thank You that You're always there to take us by the hand. In Jesus' name, amen. As we take God's hand, we're going to start walking, and we're going to focus forward. May the Lord show you the path of life, bring you fullness of joy, and extend His right hand to you. It's a hand filled with pleasures forevermore. Ladies, enjoy your discussions. I know they will be very rich. God bless you.
Thank you, Karen. That was awesome. And that's where we do need to keep our focus, is forward. So I'm going to share with you all a little news. As you know, next week is our very last study in this series. And so we're going to be starting a new Ladies' Bible Study on Tuesday, September the 8th. It's about 12 weeks long. It'll take us just to the first week of December. And it is in the Book of Nehemiah. We're going to be taking a look at the Old Testament and see what the Lord wants to show us there. So I hope you guys sign up. Registration is not open yet, but it will be coming soon. So keep your eyes looking at Facebook or on our website or wherever, and you will find when we start to open up that registration and you guys can sign up, okay? Online ladies, go ahead and sign off and get ready for your Zoom class. And we will see you next week. Thank you. Remember, preach the gospel and love one another. Thank you.